I always ask what the whole thing is.
We tried to take it away from him.
It does this not beautifully?
Hang my coat, follow me back here.
I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself.
I thought it was them. Okay. Thank you.
I got your message.
Hi, how are you clerk? Took me a half second to realize that you're here. Oh, good thing you guys brought me this, I forgot to bring one of my own gavels. Good job Joanna. High five again. But you know what, if you find that, I think someone will be like, yeah. Just yell at me if you see. Yeah, you guys just yell at me. Joanna's always knocking it out of the park. I totally forgot to grab a gavel, so thank you. Oh, she's in her office, isn't she? I was looking over there. She's in her office. Joanna has me covered with a gavel, God bless her. Zoning. Yeah, I remember hearing about that on the street. What do I have? Two minutes.
Thank you.
We'll bring it up yet again.
Color coordinated blue.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, I see.
Bonanza. Hondarosa's on South Grant.
Yeah. Right there where Hardee's is, I think.
With the big cow. And Maverick at Capital Center. I have 529. We're ready to go. She says we're ready to go. The January 21st, 2025 meeting of the City Council in the City of Springfield is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, will you please call the roll? Clerk Redpath, will you please call the roll? Clerk Redpath, will you please call the roll?
Hold on, we're not recording. Hold on, we're not recording. Hold on, we're not recording.
Oh. 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 We're gonna pause for one minute while the recording starts, just so everyone knows We're gonna pause for one minute while the recording starts, just so everyone knows We're gonna pause for one minute while the recording starts, just so everyone knows why we're pausing. why we're pausing. why we're pausing.
Alderman Gregory. Alderman Gregory. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Here. Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Williams. Alderman Williams.
Here.
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 Alderman Rockford. Alderman Rockford. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
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 Alderman Purchase. Alderman Purchase. Alderman Purchase. Alderman Nitrano. Alderman Nitrano. Alderman Nitrano.
Here.
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 Alderman Collison. Alderman Collison. Alderman Collison.
Here.
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 Alderman Conley. Alderman Conley. Alderman Conley.
Present.
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 Alderman Donlin. Alderman Donlin. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
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 Alderman Hanauer. Alderman Hanauer. Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
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 Mayor Busher. Mayor Busher. Mayor Busher.
Present.
Mayor Busher, you have a form.
Thank you. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. We have no proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're gonna go into the zoning agenda. The next item on the docket number is 2024-042 for the property located at 2242 South Sixth Street. The petitioners are 222-2-South LLC. Present zoning classification is S2 Community Shopping and Office District Section 155.031. The requested zoning relief is variance of Sections 155.300(c)(9), prohibited signs (signs with movement) 155.302(b)(4)(5)(7). General conditions for temporary signs 155.302(c)(1) banners, 155.302(c)(3)(D). Special provisions for temporary signs 155.320(a)(b)(d)(e) permitted accessory on-premise signs, 155.322(c) illuminated signs, and 155.324 projecting signs. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is denial. Concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move to continue this for 30 days until the meeting on February 18th.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to continue until February 18th. Is there any discussion among the alders? And let it be known for the record that Alderwoman Purchase has joined the group. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, Alderwoman. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-054 for the property located at 1200 West Jefferson Street, 357 North Lincoln Avenue, and 353 North Lincoln Avenue. The petitioners are Thomas J. Colvis and Christopher P. Colvis as co-trustees. The present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is variance of Sections 155.480-e3, GHIJ, and K1. Landscape screening and lighting regulations. Installation and maintenance of landscaping, front yard, corner side yard, and through lot landscaping. Parking lot landscaping, transitional buffer yard requirement and landscaping. Screening of activity areas and site and parking area lighting requirements, 155.113 screening, and 155.063c required yards for lots adjoining residential districts. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion, we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
So I have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Are there, is there any discussion from the alders on this particular topic? Seeing none, are we okay Joanna for voting? Okay. The voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
Yes, I need to get out of here.
Okay. So the motion passes. Alderman Rockford has verbally said he's a yes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Thank you, Alderman. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-056 for the property located at tax ID 21-15.0-200-042 and 21-15.0-200-048 northwest corner of Wabash Avenue and I-72. Petitioners are Stell Development LLC. Present zoning classification is B1 Highway Business Service District Section 155.033. The requested zoning relief is reclassification from B1 Highway Business Service District Section 155.033 to I-1 Light Industrial District Section 155.040 and a variance of Section 155.040B to allow this permitted additional uses all B1 Highway Business Service District uses. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial of the requested reclassification and requested variance of 155.04A, but approve a use variance to allow a warehouse and distribution center in B1 Highway Business Service District. Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is concur with the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for the use variance to allow a warehouse and distribution center in B1 Highway Business Service District as well as custom indoor manufacturing with all outside storage to be screened, provided there are no hazardous materials and no noxious odors in relation to said uses. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, which would be a use variance to allow a warehouse and distribution center in B1 and including use variances of custom indoor manufacturing with all outside stored items to be screened, no hazardous materials, and no noxious odors. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Any discussion from any alders on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. That concludes the zoning portion of our meeting. The Chair will now entertain a motion for executive session to discuss issues under 2(c)(1) pertaining to personnel and 2(c)(14) pertaining to ongoing police investigations and 2(c)(11) litigation.
We'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. We're in executive session.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything that could be done about the buzzing?
I didn't know I was the buzzing.
No, there isn't right now.
Okay, thank you Tony. I got a text too.
Yeah, that was bad.
Okay. Coming back to order from executive session. The Chair will acknowledge Treasurer Redpath Baker for a presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of December, the beginning balance is $47,41,263. We took in total receipts of $12,671,764. Total disbursements in the month of December, $10,769,791, which left the Corporate Fund balance at the end of December at $48,943,17. The ending general fund balance includes $11,744,263, which is the December ending balance for the ARPA money. That concludes my report, thank you.
The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's report. So moved. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Are there any questions from the council for Director Metzger on the OBM contract report? Seeing none, we will move along. The Chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the January 7th, 2025 regular City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
We'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this meeting and place the consent agenda on final passage.
We'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is the... Agenda items 2024... Waiting to see if they'll come up. 239. Yes, no meeting? Yeah, I was seeing if they were gonna come on the screen. Agenda items 2024, 239, 2024, 333, 2024, 540, and 2024, 541 remain tabled or in committee. Need action on one of these? No? Okay. All right.
Hold on, Mayor. 4... 541? I'd like to put 541 on debate, please.
Second. So there's a motion to pull out ordinance number 2024, 541, and a second to put it on debate. Any discussion on putting that on debate? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. So going in order, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number 2024-514, an ordinance approving appointment of Shannon Carrick to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Item Number 2025-014 on final passage.
We'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda will be an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of RFP... 2024, 541, sorry. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of RFP CV25-35 for a three-year agreement with Sinclair Television of Illinois LLC in an amount not to exceed $225,000 for a digital marketing campaign for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion to...
Motion to pass.
So we have a motion and a second to pass. Any discussion from the council on this ordinance?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
Scott, you wanna come up and give us a kinda what this is all about, please? It's been a while.
Yeah, it has. So this is our summer digital marketing campaign. We come back every three years to renew with the purchasing and the RFP. So we're coming back around for the RFP, and we had, what, six bidders, or six RFPs, excuse me, submitted. We went, continued with Sinclair Television. They've helped lead us towards three consecutive years of record traveler expenditures in Springfield. We just feel like they're solid. They were the best bid by $25,000. The worst bid was $500,000 more. So we just feel like it's been successful for us, it's affordable, and we felt comfortable moving forward with Sinclair. And again, this is for three years, $75,000 a year.
Scott?
Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the City Council? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna point out, and we've had conversations about vacant homes and the issues they present for our community. We found out this weekend, we had a second individual, unhoused person staying in a vacant home who passed after a fire. And this is something, we talk about this a lot, it's an ongoing issue in our community. We do need to find some more time and some more energy to look into different ways to address this issue. Different concepts around, you know, that low or no barrier shelter for nights, especially when we've got, the weather we've got this week and last week, where there are a lot of people who are being left at risk. And I think we just need to, as we're looking forward in our plans, as we're talking to our partners, the continuum of care and the other service providers, we need to find more creative ways to reach these people because we're losing residents. And that's... I just wanna acknowledge, we lost a resident to something that we should be, we need to be working more and finding other creative ways to address this. And I've had some conversations around that, not ready to bring anything, nothing that's solid to fruition, but I just wanna again point out that this is not something we can ignore or be comfortable with. And I know no one is, but, because we all have these vacant properties in our wards. And we all know the risk that they pose to people who are seeking shelter in a way that is really the no barrier, the ultimate no barrier, but also the highest risk to them. And so anyway, just wanna keep that on our radar and make sure that we're continuing that in our discussions. Thank you, Mayor.
I assure you Josh Sabo is very workin' on this.
Yes.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, speaking on that, Alderwoman. I think these homes sit far too long without the owners or whoever, whether they need to be demoed or whatever. And they just sit there and sit there. So I know it's a process, but I don't know what we can do to speed it up. And then my second thing, Director Fuchs, could you... Getting a lot of calls about garbage pickup. And I don't know, you know, we've been down this road before, but again, we get a 1-800 number to call for local pickup and it goes nowhere. So I don't know.
Republic.
Yeah, Republic, you know, and it's been two weeks. You know, the snow's been gone for a week or so, and you know, what's happened in my neck of the woods is the people set, their cans are full, they set the bags out, and I know they stuck to the frozen snow and there's garbage everywhere. So again, when they go to pick it up, it tears and it's all over. So I don't know what we can do to rectify the problem, but the 1-800 number isn't working.
I appreciate your concern, and we've been taking a lot of calls in the office on exactly this. It's been kind of a one-two punch. First, we had snow, almost a foot of it over the course of a week, and that, all that garbage carrier suspended operations because of that. They were trying to catch back up, and then we've been hit with all this extremely cold weather, and that's, I know they pulled their guys off on Friday, right? Republic let us know they pulled everybody off on Friday. The complaint that you have about the 1-800 number, we have heard that before. I would encourage people to call our office. They wanna talk to Christina LaRusso, she's doing a very good job, she's in constant contact with them. Weather has created the difficulties and it's put them behind, and if somebody needs to play catch-up, or got missed, or is in the situation that you described, if you could get ahold of our office, Christina's been dealing with that, she's been dealing with that for almost three weeks now.
And also, Director, people wanna talk to the company. I mean, I appreciate calling Public Works. Public Works isn't the problem, it's the company we're paying to pick up our garbage. So they wanna talk to somebody personally, you know what I mean? And it's, I think it's wrong for the company to put a 1-800 number out there. It has nothing to do with Springfield, Illinois. They should have a local number where they can call and complain to them.
I can appreciate that, and Christina is in contact with them all the time, and if those problems arise with their 1-800 number, she communicates that with them as well. So we've been in a tough spot. I understand your constituents are not happy. We're trying to work through the process, but Mother Nature is, as I said, dealt us a whammy.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Donlin. Are you, do you need Director Fuchs?
Hanauer.
Hanauer's before you, sorry. Sorry, Alderman Hanauer, I was skipping you. Do you need Director Fuchs, Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I do. Director, let's be real, the local company is caught, got caught up right away. I don't understand why, well, a couple things, I don't understand if a company's not doing a very good job, or you're not satisfied, why you don't switch companies. But apparently, people don't wanna do that, and I get that. But, you know, it's like snow, you start getting complaints, and you know, it's neighborhoods that it's happening in. And then they say, well, we're catching up, and then they're like, oh, we can't make it today. And people have got their garbage cans out, you know, multiple days. My understanding is the recycling, it's been weeks on some of the recycling. And, you know, and one of the people said, well, I asked for a refund, they said, well, you don't pay for recycling, so we don't have to give you a refund. Well, yeah, they do pay for recycling. And when neighborhoods are getting skipped, there should be fines to that company because we need to get, we need claw money back, because they're not doing, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I get the snow, but how is it that one company, once the snow's, you know, once they're able to get around, they're out, and the other company says, I just can't do it? And they don't have guys on the back of the truck that actually throw the garbage in the back, into the back? So... I appreciate that, and if people are having that level of difficulty, they need to communicate with our office, we need to know that. We need a number from Republic, and before we go any farther with any other garbage service, and you know, I know they're gonna come wanting an increase in that, I'm not giving anybody anything if we don't have a local contact here in Springfield that they can call and they talk to somebody here in Springfield. I don't care about, you know, Chicago or wherever else they are, it's gotta be here in Springfield. I will communicate that to them tomorrow. So, thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is on a different topic, it's police related, so Chief, if you could meander towards the front, this would be a short one, but...
Director Fuchs, you're out of the hot seat. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Director. We, our office, the corporation, Tim Griffin's office has been getting, it seems like an extraordinary amount of calls related to stolen vehicles, seems to be, that has stepped up in this community, and I just wanna make sure that that message has been conveyed to the Police Department, and we're aware of it and on it.
Yeah, absolutely, that has certainly been something we've been dealing with, excuse me, for quite some time, especially since the Hyundai and Kia theft YouTube video made its way out there. I will say that for those of you that saw Springfield Police Department issues, and the mayor issued a certificate of commendation to a handful of officers that arrested three juveniles who were responsible for over 40 motor vehicle thefts and motor vehicle burglaries. So yes, we're well aware of the increase in motor vehicle thefts. I think they're up, I won't give you a number, they are up significantly from last year, and I do believe it has a lot to do with a handful of juveniles in our community, and we continue to arrest them.
our community. And we continue to arrest them. And unfortunately, they continue to be released, but well aware of it.
Chief, are there any things that we can convey to the general public as far as what they can do to help prevent it?
Well, for starters, park your vehicles in well-lit areas. Keep your vehicles locked. Don't put any valuables that would attract someone to look in there and see them. I think those are the main things. Security cameras are certainly a big help. May not prevent it, but would certainly help us hold individuals accountable.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderwoman Otriana.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to address the massage parlor, massage establishment issue. I know we have some speakers coming up today on it, but just for some clarity. So I know the massage establishment in Ward Six, that was a cause of concern for the neighbors there, has recently been shut down and fined as the news story wrote. And then I just wanted to get some clarity. So those fines were the result of violations to which code or which ordinance?
So those were building and zoning violations based on an inspection that was done before our massage parlor ordinance was in place?
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And so I've obviously read through the ordinance that we passed in June on massage parlors. But there's been a little bit of confusion as to who is responsible for implementing it. So could you just expand a little on how the ordinance addresses criminal activity, or what role, if any, the Springfield Police Department has in enforcing this ordinance?
Right. So this ordinance doesn't address crime. The police would be in charge of arresting people and filing criminal charges, trafficking and the like. However, if criminal activity is taking place and arrests are made at one of these establishments, then on the licensing and civil side, we can use, we can use that activity to revoke a license or to prohibit occupancy in the building. So my office isn't going after criminal activity, but we can go after the business itself if there's criminal activity being conducted inside.
Thank you so much. And then, so with the massage parlor that was problematic in Ward Six, we did have evidence brought forward of something that is prohibited in the ordinance of advertising of a sexual nature. And so I wanted to know, like, how, what's our plan to sort of enforce that? I imagine it would be licensing, like, your half of it, right?
Right. So the advertisements would be a violation that, of the business that we would go after. In that particular case, the business. So with the, with the building and zoning violations, we, those were levied against the owner. But if there's a tenant that's offering those services online, that would be a violation of our ordinance that we would pursue in administrative court.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, I think that pretty well clears it up for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderwoman, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. Director Fuchs, you don't have to come back up to the podium, but I, just from the consensus of the concerns from last week, I know when Republic Services and Lake Area Services, when they had said they was going to resume their services the following Monday, I've sent in dozens of emails since then. And I just think out of respect, we should ask Republic Services to come and give us an update. They should let us know what's going on because it's not your office. It's not Ms. Christina, and she is very good with responding back quickly, giving updates. I know Alderman Carlson, he just had someone that was in my ward, and they shared how many days since the pickup has started back, and they still haven't received their garbage picked up as of today. So I do think it's a huge issue. And to have you up to just take messages back to them, I don't think is fair. I think that they should come and give us an update personally themselves, especially, we don't need to be calling a 1-800 number neither. So if we could do that, I would greatly appreciate it. And probably next week would be best if we could get them here to talk to us and let us know what's going on. That would be good, and I think it would be great for the public. And then speaking of trash, I would like to address that with them first before we go back to following up to make sure we can put garbage on the CWLP bill per our ordinance when people don't have it, whether they're tenants or they're actual homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Speaking of snow, I think we have some situations, Mr. Fuchs, that in our older part of our cities that have some alleys, that when the snow falls, it's going to be hard for those big trucks to turn regardless. I know we got some spots on Yale that we may have to work out where they put it in the front. And I know they got that boulevard, oh, there you are, Mr. Fuchs. I know they got that boulevard there. So it may be tight. You don't got to come up, my friend, but I just wanted you to just put that in your notes, my friend, as something to work through. Thank you. Mr. Murdock, on the massage parlor thing here, and I asked you this earlier, in my, in my, in my head, I feel like any of those, any of these parlors that we are looking to license, if we or anybody, member of the public can go to one of these crazy sites and Google their name and their business, and I know you sent me a good explanation, but I think we just need to go over this so people understand. And their number and their information is on that site, in my head, they shouldn't get a license or that license should be revoked immediately. And I know there's some due process things that we have to work through.
So that would be, that would be grounds to not issue a license. If they, if one were to get a license and then that were to come up, obviously, we would cite them. We would try to revoke. They would be able to present defenses to that. They do have an opportunity to be heard, but that would be a violation of our ordinance and something we could cite them for.
Okay. So if we went that process and we said, you know what, I keep seeing your number and business on the site, it's not supposed to be there, we're going to revoke your license until this court date, and then the judge or administrator judge decides at that point which way to go with that.
That's correct. That's how we would proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Rockford.
Yes, Director Fuchs, and just to reiterate what Alderwoman Purchase was talking, I think it's wrong that your office takes the hits for something that you're not responsible for. And, you know, for these people not to, not to give a local number to these residents, I think it's wrong. And I agree, they should come down here and give us an explanation of why. Thank you.
Any other old business or unfinished business? Seeing none, we're on to new business. Any new business to come before the council? Surprised you have nothing. I'm looking at you.
I, Mayor, just...
Oh, Alderwoman Conley.
Sorry, just as a reminder, we do have our budget workshop on Thursday. So it's, I don't know if it's new or just ongoing, but...
Okay. Then seeing none, we will move on to citizens who have previously requested to address the city council. You ready for, you guys good? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The first person signed up to speak is Andy Schallenberger.
I'm here tonight, not as an expert or an official. I'm a bus driver. I'm a father. And I'm someone that's seen both the struggles and the resilience of this community. Like so many others, my wife and I, we've lived a challenging life. But we believe that we have the opportunity to create lasting, meaningful change in our community. So that's why I'm here, is to propose an initiative that's built, that's foundation is built off of two key pillars. The first, a pre-rental certification program that would improve our housing conditions and accountability. The second, a tenant landlord support program, so we can rebuild trust to be able to create stability. These are practical, actionable steps that we can take to uplift not only individuals, but entire communities. As a bus driver, I see the sacrifices people make every day. The parent that spends an hour each way to work. The young people, lost, struggling to find footing in a world that, quite frankly, dismisses and undervalues them. Families that are stuck in a desperate and constant state of holding on despite difficult, unsafe, and unresolved housing conditions. And landlords that are frustrated. Landlords that have lost all compassion due to bad experiences that have left them burned and without support. Those struggles, those struggles are not separate. They're all connected. And that's why this initiative can help. This would be the first step. Imagine our community with a dwindling homeless population, where housing's stable, where pride in one's home is encouraged, and where landlords are supported in providing quality, safe housing. I believe this is possible with the right partnerships. And I would love to explore and look into pathways that would expand tenant empowerment and even foster home ownership in the future. I'm asking for your help. I'm asking for your help to make change. We, sorry. We need to sit down and have an honest, honest conversation. See where common ground can be found. Let's lead by example. Let's show the nation how you can take compassion, understanding, and a sense of shared responsibility and heal division and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. The next person signed up to speak is Dr. Lisa Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to deliver a very serious thank you to Calvin Christian III. When you all had that special session, and that man's family was waiting in that room because they already knew what the result...
Speak up, ma'am. We can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
You can pull it down. Listen.
I can?
Yes.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, ma'am.
I issued a thank you to Calvin Christian III. When you had the special session, and city clerk Redpath's family was waiting in the back room, people understood that you had already known what you were going to do, regardless of any feedback you would have. And we broke for the special session, waiting for the regular session. And I came back through that side. Normally, I don't because I can't stand the police. So I normally don't come through that side. But I did that time. And I said, ooh, y'all gonna be so sued. And here we are. So I would like to go on the record thanking Calvin Christian. At this point, I don't care what the result of it is. I just want the record to show that someone was dissatisfied with that process. I wanted to go over some things. In December 2023, a federal court in Illinois entered a permanent injunction against the city of Springfield, Illinois prohibiting it from enforcing a local spacing ordinance that bans people with disabilities from living in homes within 600 feet of one another. The court's order followed a July 2022 trial at which a jury awarded $293,000 in damages to the home's residents, their families, and the agency that supported them. In October of 2023, Attorney General Kwame Raoul filed a lawsuit against City Water, Light, and Power owned by the city of Springfield for allegedly releasing more than 700 tons of fly ash into the environment. In February 2022, the Illinois Human Rights Commission unanimously ruled in favor of a former city employee against the city of Springfield, stating that discrimination in health care coverage for employees who are transgender can violate state law, prompting the city of Springfield to change its health insurance plan to cover gender-affirming care. And that was a $95,000 discriminatory error. Citizens have rights and they have duties. Citizens have rights and they have duties. I know because I teach this. I taught it this week. All right? As a matter of fact, I taught it today. They have a right to redress their government. They have a right, right, to complain. They have a responsibility, however. There's a different, right? The USCIS has two different tables. What are citizens' rights? What are citizens' responsibilities? It is a responsibility of citizens to actively engage in local government. And for some reason, plenty of you seem to believe that they don't have the right and the responsibility to do that. It's built into the U.S. Code. So when, let me say another thing. Another thing that I teach is that there are four major socializing agents, okay? Socializing agents. That's the family, schools, community, and the media. The media is one of the major socializing agents. So when you go into the media and say, I don't know why they're questioning what I did. They didn't do that to Langfelder. They didn't make Langfelder do all of this, that, and the other. You are attempting to socialize a segment of a population and then attempting to derail the rights and responsibilities of other citizens who disagree with you. I'm looking directly at you. Do you even know the rights and responsibilities of a citizen? I would think that the 10, 10 of you should look it up. I've sent you things before, and I can send you definitions again. But you need to look it up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next person signed up to speak is Dr. Brandon Durman.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Durman. CWLP is my home energy provider. I'm addressing you tonight as part of the Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future, or CSUF. This is a coalition of local community groups and concerned users of our utility's services. We were very glad to hear that CWLP will be including the cost of a new Integrated Resources Plan, or IRP, in its upcoming budget presentation to the council. We're here tonight to share our hopes and recommendations for the IRP. We believe these should inform the budget proposal as well as the IRP process. We also want to express our interest in helping to foster an economically, socially, and environmentally responsible IRP. IRPs are crucial to the responsible governance of a publicly-owned utility. Utility planning today is complex, but there are excellent information sources available, and we've frankly been studying them. The content of an IRP, that is, the options and the criteria that it will cover is important, but so is the process, especially given the public ownership of our utility. We want to start a conversation on both of these tonight and touch on how this new IRP should build on the previous one from 2018. So two important elements that I want to flag first of the IRP process are public participation and contractor selection. So on public participation, the council and the public both need to be able to meaningfully engage with the IRP process. This means... This means more than simply allowing public comment at the end of the IRP exercise, right? So there must be transparency and input on the scenarios that the IRP contractor will run for the utility's future and the criteria by which these scenarios will be evaluated as options for us, for our community. So we'll say a bit more about these in a moment as part of IRP content. The contractor who conducts the IRP is also an important part of the process. We should not consider hiring a local contractor or one with political ties to council members or the mayor. We value these businesses and their employees. They're our friends and our neighbors, but we need to ensure objective third-party analysis for responsible resource planning, and we need to avoid any actuality or appearance of conflict of interest. This is crucial to understanding the range of opportunities for our utility, and it's also a basic tenet of good governance, as you know. So we will share a list of excellent and objective consultants from whom CWLP and the council should solicit bids to, to do the IRP for us. The IRP should evaluate a broad range of scenarios for the utility's future energy supply and the services that it offers, and it should assess those scenarios with comprehensive forward-looking criteria. We agree that factors like affordability and reliability are important to evaluate in the IRP, but so are equity and so are the energy sources and their characteristics. So our society, I'm sorry, our city suffers from stark racialized and geographic inequalities, and we must look for every opportunity to remedy those, including within the operation of our public utility. Energy sources also entail risks as well as benefits. Coal and other fossil fuels can tie us as a community into risks of health and environmental harm and legal responsibility for those harms, as well as the ups and downs of pricing. It also, they also pit us against major long-term trends in both markets and regulations. Recent economic analyses suggest that renewables are often more economically favorable, even in shorter timeframes and including in our region and communities like ours. Technology changes at a rapid pace as well, so IRPs should also be reviewed and updated on a regular basis to account for these changes. We need the IRP to consider a range of scenarios and utilize criteria comprehensive enough that it will capture the true costs and benefits of the options and the opportunities that we face. The 2018 IRP was a great start. We should build on it, and we should reach higher than the bar that it set. The IRP, that IRP involves some meaningful public participation. There was a public comment period before it was bid out, for example. This time, we should go further with public involvement. Understanding and giving time for different ideas is crucial to successful IRP processes. Again, we applaud CWLP's leadership for recognizing the need for an IRP this year. Our utility and every other public utility in the country is under pressure and faces complex decisions. That's why a robust IRP is necessary. We are offering to help make this IRP as useful and as beneficial to our community as it possibly can be by sharing information and helping to realize the aims of processing content that we've just described. To be clear, though, we are seeking ongoing back-and-forth conversation and exchange of information. We're proud of CWLP, and we're proud of our city, and we believe in their future. So thanks again for the time this evening.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Williams, who signed up to speak.
Thank you, sir. Is Director Brown there? Or can you come up, sir, please? So he just spoke of how it was done the last time we did an IRP.
Yeah.
Do we have plans or a schedule or?
No, we haven't had a schedule yet. But we were putting money in the budget for, for next year to, to start one. But I think, I think it was pretty clear on discussions in the past that the next IRP would follow a very similar path. I mean, as far as the, you know, public engagement and stuff like that, definitely intend to follow that kind of stuff. And, you know, I, studying all the resources, you know, those kinds of things is, that's, that's common for an IRP.
So what I, what I like is that when I first got on the council, we was told, no, we didn't do it last year. Now we're around and we're doing it this year, and I do like the engagement. I, I do have a good feeling about this engagement, but I want it to be an honest engagement. So that's why dates are going to become more important as far as scheduling out when we, when they meet, when you hear from them, when they hear from you. Of course, we're going to hear from you, but again, I don't want it to be after the decision is made either. I want it to be during and.
Yeah, they'll be upfront, yeah.
People to feel like they're a part of the process.
You'll have comments upfront, you'll have comments at the end, you know, that's, because you want to have the, the inputs going into it, you know, kind of whatever he's thinking, and then on the output.
I just wanted to get you on record saying you're in agreement with the engagement, that you're in agreement with the engagement, and I look forward to as the, as we get there, pass the button, get going, that we do actually do these things. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I echo Alderman Williams' comments about public engagements, very important. They've cried out for it, rightfully so. I, I just don't remember that, this is really what I want to ask you. When we last did this in 2018, do we hire a local firm or some other firm to coordinate?
Oh, yeah, there's really no local firms that are qualified for that, yeah.
Wasn't it some firm out of Florida or somewhere?
Yeah, the Energy Authorities who we chose, you know, there's other ones that were, that are, that are, you know, have a lot of experience with this, but they were a lot more, more expensive at the time.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Ann Logue.
My name is Ann Logue. I'm a CWLP energy user and member of the Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future. With the time I've been given tonight, I will drill down on some of the questions that, what makes up an integrated resource plan that my colleague mentioned earlier. Specifically, I will discuss some of the risks and promises of different energy resources and how we believe they should be included and assessed in the new IRP. These risks and promises are economic, but they are also social and environmental in impact, so transparency is crucial. You all up there have a two-sided handout that I'll be referring to. Assessing what mix of energy resources we decide to invest in each year locks us into a direction for many years to come, and that's important to know. This assessment involves complexities needing vision, expertise, and the ability to be open to new technology. Looking at today's prices does not tell the complete story. In simple terms, some energy sources, like renewables, might cost more in the installation but end up paying for themselves in free energy supply like wind and solar. Using fossil fuel resources generates long-term high expenses that pile up in the ongoing purchase and transport of the fuel and its waste, not to mention the expense to bury toxic waste, the maintenance of waste areas as well. Price volatility is also a huge unpredictable issue with fossil fuels, especially natural gas. Compare the construction cost of the $1.6 billion Lincolnland Energy Gas Plant, that is 1.3 gigawatts in Pawnee. You need to add the cost of ongoing prices for water and gas as well for the operation. And then compare it to the 200-megawatt solar way, a possibility, with battery storage that will give at least 20 years of free energy, possibly, assisted with the security of Daumen IV kept up, kept as a backup peaker plant. So using renewable, renewable energy in conjunction with a backup to have reliable energy with Daumen IV. Why bother looking at these issues since the industrial age? Okay, I missed it. Okay, come on. Since the industrial age, our global temperatures have skyrocketed. Our jet streams have weakened. The polar jet stream, a river of wind flowing from west to east, encircles the entire northern hemisphere. Its waves once maintained a boundary between the cold Arctic air and warmer air of the south. Yet now, with the Arctic warming three times faster than average along with the rest of the world, this causes larger east-moving jet stream waves to slow down, affecting weather patterns across North America to Central Europe and Asia. This slow movement has caused extreme weather patterns such as heat waves, cold snaps, flooding, storms like our derecho were a result of this, and droughts. What we are seeing are these wavy, whoa, what happened? Okay. I missed, I'm using his computer and it's like, what? Okay. I'm running out of time. Okay, yeah, okay. Here we go, okay. So these wavy patterns happen more frequently as the climate changes, and this is important because we depend on these jet streams for our stable weather patterns. It may come as a surprise to some, but our planet has a limited capacity to absorb massive emissions and waste that we are putting out. It's incredible that so many do not comprehend this, or is it just depraved indifference? And that makes me angry. The Earth, just like any living system, is now breaking down at record levels as it crumbles from the weight of our careless greed and lazy treatment. So when we assess the cost and benefit of each energy resource we are considering, let's make sure we look at the full picture. And that includes our impact on the planet, how much we depend upon it, how we got to this point, and where we choose to go from here.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Jenna Broom.
Good evening. So we've discussed a lot about massage parlors, which are not a legitimate form of business. And so I thought that I would speak from a little bit of personal experience as a former licensed massage therapist, give a little bit of background on what a licensed massage therapist actually is. And so I brought some actual laws, because I know we talked about having the laws. So I have with me the Massage Therapy Practice Act and then the Massage Licensing Act. So the purpose of this act is to protect and benefit the public by setting standards of qualifications, education, training, and experience for those who seek to practice massage therapy, to promote high standards of professional performance for those licensed to practice massage therapy in the state of Illinois, and to protect the public from unprofessional conduct by persons licensed to practice massage therapy. This was fought for by massage therapists to legitimize the very real and very healing work that they do. Massage, or massage therapy, means a system of structured palpation or movement of the soft tissues of the body. The system may include, but is not limited to, techniques such as effluorase, petrification, topotement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. These techniques may be applied by a licensed massage therapist. The purpose of the practice of massage as licensed under this act is to enhance the general health and well-being of the mind and body of the recipient. Massage therapist means a person who is licensed by the department and administers massage for compensation. Okay, so persons regulated by this act are designated as massage therapists and therefore are exclusively entitled to utilize these terms, massage, massage therapy, and massage therapist, when advertising or printing promotional material. Okay, so anyone who knowingly aids and abets this is considered in violation. Anyone not authorized under those definitions and knowingly utilizes those terms when advertising commits a violation of this act. Okay, let's see. Persons engaged in massage for compensation must be licensed. You will get licensed when you have successfully completed a massage therapy program approved by the department that requires a minimum of 600 hours and has passed a competency examination. Topics covered in this education include anatomy, physiology, pathology, theory, technique, and practice, contraindications, benefits, and I wanted to point these out specifically: ethics, business and legalities of massage, professional standards, including draping and modesty, therapeutic relationships and communications. I'm going to talk about the latter and then the former. Communication is key as a massage therapist. I recently just got a massage, also from a massage therapist, and we communicated about the pressure I needed, what felt good, what did not feel. So communicating, being able to speak to one another is key. Therapeutic relationships. In all of my time talking about ethics, it was specifically stated that if you intend to begin a sexual relationship with a client, they can no longer be your client. Okay, let's see. Stuff about being fingerprinted, I don't have a whole lot of time. Let's see here. Display: Every holder of a license shall display it or a copy in a conspicuous place in the holder's principal office or any other location where the holder renders massage therapy services. Every license shall have the license number visible. Okay, let's see. So a person not licensed under this act and engaged in the business of offering massage shall not aid, abet, assist, procure, advise, employ, or contract with any unlicensed person to practice massage therapy contrary to the rules or provisions of this act. Person violating this shall be treated as a licensee for the purposes of disciplinary action under this section. All right, there's a lot and a lot and a lot, really, you guys should just read it. Advertising: It is a misdemeanor for any person, organization, or corporation to advertise massage services unless the person providing the services holds a valid license under this act. Now, all of these words and all of this stuff that I've said, I'm going to ask you guys, do you legitimately believe that any of the 40 massage parlors have a licensed massage therapist on staff? I'm just going to put that out there. So the most important thing is saving these women from sex trafficking, but we also have tools. This is the IDFPR, the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. Every single person who has a licensed massage therapist is on that website. Corporation Council, I encourage you to work with IDFPR to share and make sure that these.
Thank you very much. The next person signed up to speak is Robert Frazier. You don't want to come up and speak, sir? Okay, thank you, Mr. Frazier. The next person signed up to speak is Ken Pasha.
I'd like my time to restart, please. Right, we're, okay, so that's how we're going to play things, all right. I'm sure you guys had a fun week thanks to me and the other people, right? Couple phone calls, just a couple emails, I'm sure. I think the confusing part for me is, is the FOIA requests are starting to roll in from the people that have gotten those requests fulfilled, which we appreciate. The thing is, is numerous locations failed their licensing. They did not pass inspection, and there has not been follow-up on that. So I'm just curious where the process is with this, because if we're talking about the process, and we don't want me skipping process, and we got to remind everybody that due process exists, I wonder where the process is? Because you guys aren't transparent about it. And I think it worries everybody that it just keeps kind of like slinking in and out of the water, just popping its head out when people make a big deal about it, because we're not going to forget about these kind of things. Because it's really frustrating over and over and over again that the, people act like there's no precedent for this kind of stuff. We're not the first city to deal with this, not just even in the area. And I think the problem I have is, is that there is very much a very easy way to handle this. I mean, the city could easily reach out to human trafficking organizations in other cities that have handled these kind of problems and stamp them out. And the idea that they go to other cities, so what? Follow behind them and hand that legislation out? It shouldn't be that hard. I mean, the idea that we just stop enforcing crack dens from being crack dens because more crack dens might show up sounds kind of dumb, doesn't it? I mean, so that kind of logic applied to massage parlors doesn't really hold water for most people, I would think. Because the goal is, is regardless of even if one pops up after that, we stopped at least one location, and then another location, and then another location from allowing rapes to be occurring daily in our city while human trafficking operations seem to think they were going to continue to turn a blind eye or slow pedal a process that we have every right to speed up at our leisure. There's still a way to follow the law and do it quickly. I'm not asking to do it inefficiently or turn a blind eye to standing rule, but quite frankly, it seems interesting to me that we can move quickly on topics we want. I mean, if it was a girl named Kaylee, or, you know, Braylen, or somebody like that, and we had the West Side going nuts over it, and it was some white women being trafficked, I can promise that it would probably be a much quicker process. We'd be hopping into these applications, looking at the photos, because I sent you guys 15 locations, did I not? The same night you guys asked for them, with photos, ads, names, phone numbers, they're all still there, they're all still untouched, they're all still operating. And I understand there's a process, but I mean, I don't know how much more evidence you want. I mean, I'll go talk to Scarlett about running a sting for you guys, is that going to move it quicker? it quicker? I mean, at what point does it seem like the citizens are doing enough and that the people in charge of the municipality here need to do more? And I want to touch on what Connelly brought up earlier. I want to thank you for mentioning the people that died this last weekend, because three people died due to the unhoused situation. And while I don't expect our services to be miracle workers and make every single person coming off the streets, because we have to recognize that some people just don't want to, and that some services aren't really accessible to a lot of men out there on the street, which I think a lot of us that are familiar with the situation understand that already. So it's frustrating when we see things like that, as you mentioned Larry, with the demos, these places, like there's a house three blocks from me that sits on Ash that is lit up like a Christmas tree, because nobody lives there, and they've already renovated that house twice due to people breaking in for shelter. And I think it's frustrating for everybody that these kind of places still are standing when the city has the funds and a program to take them down. Because quite frankly, these are the kind of things I've talked to you guys about. These sort of things that add into another and create more problems, which is because we're not fixing the original ones or chasing down the ones that are occurring. We absolutely could dump all these houses, and then we can talk about confronting the unhoused issue in the same breath. The problem is, is it seems like we have this problem that we need to fix an issue when it appears, but these issues are not leaving, they haven't ever really left. They never stopped, they never went away, we just stopped paying attention to them. And I think the problem is, is there is a lot of people coming to you, not just me. It's not like, I mean, consider me a canary in the coal mine if you want, but I'm telling you something's wrong here. Something is wrong with this city, something is wrong with the way things are being deployed, and it's starting to show. The cracks are coming through, and your constituents are reaching out to you. I'm sure of that, and if they're not, they're going to, because we're going to keep showing up every week, and these crowds keep getting bigger behind me. So I think the key that I really want to note is, is I want to note, three of our aldermen are putting up an ordinance for the Ward 1 thing. I will note that you made a comment in Illinois Times about the other mayor didn't have to do that. Misty, I'm going to hold you to your electoral promises. You said Langfelder was corrupt. I think we all know that he was. I think the processes that he ran and the way things that he did things was highly suspect. And you promised us that that would change. So what he was held to or the standard he didn't follow shouldn't matter. You should promise us better than what we've had before, because you and I can agree that that previous administration was a trash fire, was it not? And I hope that you'll give us better, Misty, because that's what all we want from any of you, regardless of party affiliation. I don't care if you have an R, an I, or D. This city is in a state where our governor is willing to fight against our own president for illegal orders. So I feel like as a city, we can do more, and we can expect better of our officials, whether it's on Facebook or anywhere else. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time. The next person signed up to speak is Brianna Eilers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I help you?
I don't think our mic's on.
Is your mic on, ma'am?
Hello. Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. I normally have something planned, so I'm normally looking down, so I'm going to look at all your faces for a minute, because I'm getting more comfortable with you guys. I just wanted to come up here, and I just wanted to remind everybody that it was negative six degrees last night. I came up here before, and I told you guys that I was almost homeless, and I do want to thank the Sarah Center, Fistreach Renaissance, because I was able to save my house. However, I had to pull strings. I, I had to pull strings, and that shouldn't have happened, I shouldn't have had to do that. I would have been homeless if I didn't pull those strings. And just a reminder, it is negative six degrees outside. We want to talk about houses that are empty. We have houses in our ward, I would know, I live right next to one, that they are buying, they're flipping, and they're sitting. Buying, flipping, sitting. Where's the sale? That is a viable house that is just sitting there. It's been sitting there for about a year now. They go in there every now and again, they might flip out a window or something like that, but it's just sitting there. Right down the road, we've got John Vaughn's old apartment buildings, and I'm telling you right now, those things, they're giving shelter to a lot of people, and that is a good thing, because that shelter is keeping them out of this negative six degree weather. I don't care if it's livable, I don't care if it's viable. My house is going to crumble in front of me, it's going to crumble while I am in it. But it's still a house, and it still has heat, and I can still keep food in it, and I can still raise my kids in it. And this is where we are as a community. We are living in squander, literal squander. We can't feed our kids. I have to go and I have to get my laundry done at his facility because I can't afford soap. My clothes today, they finally smell clean for the first time in two months, do you know how awesome that is? I haven't had a dryer in I don't know how long, and man, to be able to just wash and dry my clothes and them not have a little bit of a musty smell on them, that was pretty great. Now my kids can go to school, and they can have clean clothes. I have to go to the bread line during the day, because I don't have food at home. If I did have food at home, my food goes to my children. Let's see, what's another privilege that I can point out? I don't have a car, I walk everywhere, everywhere, to the point where my shoes literally have holes in the soles of them. So I have to go to Intricate Minds, or I have to go to the Washington Street Mission, which don't get me started on that, and try and figure out if any of the shoes there will fit me, because I need shoes in order to walk the city. I can't afford the bus, because the bus costs money. So that's where we're at. We are at, in a spot in this city, your constituents are becoming homeless, they are starving, they are cold, they are starting house fires in order to stay warm. Do something about it. That's it. Also, fuck Trump.
Please do not use vulgar language in the council chambers, this is on public access channel where actual students watch for school projects. The next person signed up to speak is Tiara Standage.
Hello, I'm Tiara Standage, Executive Director of Intricate Minds. On Sunday, I shared an article by freelance investigative journalist Sarah Boils. This article delved into the horrid details of the multiple massage parlors in this city that are sex trafficking victims and advertising them online. I made the statement that no victim owes anyone any explanation or public humiliation to be seen, heard, or protected. I'll repeat that. No victim owes anyone any explanation to be seen, heard, or protected. One of our alderwomen commented on the shared status, accusing me of misunderstanding her words and explanations on purpose, alienating her, and spreading misinformation. At last week's Committee of the Whole, this alderwoman said, and I quote, "What would be wonderful is to have an actual victim come and tell us, so we could prosecute whoever is trafficking them." So we do need your help, but you got to work with us where we are. I want to take a moment to explain what I do at Intricate Minds. By title, I am a harm reductionist. Harm reduction is utilizing strategies to lessen the negative effects on our community. Harm reduction is healthcare. Harm reduction is love. Harm reduction is making sure that people's basic needs are met, no matter how that person may differ from society's norms. Harm reduction is meeting people where they are. I heard a lot of concern about the right to be protected against discrimination, business owner rights, property tax rights, but I never heard anything about victim rights. This is very scary. This is rape culture. What are we doing to protect those who don't have the ability to protect themselves? If our own elected officials are telling us that involving law enforcement isn't always the best or safest route, what is? Who do we call? How do we stop rape culture? I was done, but I have a little extra time if anybody wanted to address me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you, T.
The next person signed up to speak would be Erin Cahill.
Hey, y'all. So, January 20th, the American people sworn Donald Trump is president. During his last presidency, he outright declared war on immigrants and LGBTQIA+ people. In the last few weeks, he has announced pulling funding from any school that recognizes more than two genders. He has called for mass deportation, starting in Chicago. We are three hours south of Chicago. There are two or three cities between us and Chicago. Ain't much stopping them. He has threatened to send military members into our school systems, removing children who might be undocumented. Our governor has recently stated that he would not allow this to happen to any of his people in his state. But as a city council, what are your current plans to keep both our LGBTQIA+ community and our immigrants safe? When ICE rolls in here, will Springfield Police Department help them round people up? As it sits, I'm not confident they won't. Are you going to wait for somebody to be victimized before you protect your citizens? Part of taking care of your citizens is to help them from becoming victims in the first place. What are you as council doing to help prevent more citizens from becoming the victims? We as a community have done so much and can only do so much. What steps can be taken to prevent soldiers from coming into our local schools and taking children from our schools for deportation? What steps can be taken to keep gender-affirming care available to those that need it? Regardless of how you personally feel about it or your personal politics, gender-affirming care can be anything from the shot you take to regulate your hormones post-menopause to your little blue pill that helps you get it up when the time's right. That is all gender-affirming care. But we're going to tell somebody they don't get it because they weren't born a certain way. That's unacceptable. The federal government needs us to stand with our state and say no. We take care of our own. I come from a military background. In the military, you're not coming for one of us, you're coming for all of us. We stand a united front, 99% of us are, and somebody acts a fool, we take them out back and we take care of it. We fix the problem. Mayor, what can you do to sit down with the governor and address the, what you can provide to help? We're the capital city. This is, when people think Illinois, first they think Chicago, but then they think Springfield, because we are, we are the seat of this state. We are where all of the rules and regulations for this entire state come from. The governors feel strongly about protecting us. What do you say? You going to help protect folks? Will you be part of the solution, or will you stand idly by and let these folks be victimized? We were talking about the unhoused population. Sitting down here, I just went ahead and ran some quick numbers. So, to rent the BOSS Center on bad, bad days like we've had, the BOSS Center runs about $5,000 a day, 5K, out of a what, 20-something million-dollar budget? 5K a day, three, three days that we've had unbearable weather. Just, you know, this past week. That's only 15K. To take care of people who are sleeping in the snow, cots. Cots run about 50 to, between $60 to $70 each on Amazon. Those are foldable cots that can be reused over and over and over. We have this thing in every state called the CERT team, it's a Community Emergency Response Team. They train and they drill for natural disasters. They help FEMA. They set up shelters, they set up water stations, they set up food stations. It would be nothing to get in touch with the CERT team in Illinois and say, hey, y'all want to run a drill? We got some stuff that needs set up. We're trying to take care of some people. This is an emergency. Cakewalk, their commander gets in touch with them over their pager, says, hey, we've got a job, show up if you can. It's not a hard process. I did it a lot when I was a firefighter.
Thank you, sir. The next, excuse me, the next person signed up to speak is Donald Hanrahan.
Good evening. Does the election of a climate science denier greenlight efforts to double down on coal and gas? Think again. 15 million voters stayed home compared to 2020. Trump, again, failed to get 50% of the popular vote, got 2 million less than he got in 2020 when he lost. There is no mandate from the people to rip down environmental protections, or to embrace the freeing of admitted white supremacists, Proud Boys, Oath Keepers, and Nazis, even if the power behind President Trump twice threw a Nazi salute from the presidential inauguration platform. My dad spent nine months in a Nazi prison camp, and he would have been disgusted at this version of his Republican Party. But I digress. If we don't have a livable planet, no other thing matters, no other thing. Am I exaggerating? Planetary warming in the Arctic has weakened the jet stream, and in Illinois, its effect is felt with polar vortexes and worse, wetter winters, wetter springs, floods, abnormally hot and dry conditions in the summer and fall, but punctuated by extreme storms like derechoes and larger tornadoes and flash floods. Food systems are at stake around the planet. Midwestern farms are dumping toxic chemicals into waterways down to the soon aptly named Gulf of America, where its 7,000-square-mile, American-made, toxic dead zone chokes oxygen levels so that nothing can live there. Habitat destruction and toxic pollution decimated plant and animal diversity, and in my lifetime, 70%, in my lifetime, wildlife has declined 70%. Invasive species decimate forests, upset key oceanic ecosystems. We crossed a threshold with melting permafrost. Now, tundras across the planet are belching huge plumes of methane into the atmosphere. It can't be stopped, a gas 28 times more toxic than carbon. But hey, the stock market's doing great. Let's invade Canada and Greenland, bread, circuses, my bathrooms. The reality is that we, the people, as opposed to the major political parties, stand for something different. We stand for protecting the environment, but there's a staggering disconnect between what people want and what politicians preach. And this is shown by an extensive, well-documented study in 2020, repeated in 2023 by the Venerated Pew Research Center. 67% of Americans, including a majority who identify as Republican, said that the US should prioritize developing renewables, wind, solar, and hydrogen. Just 32% say that about expanding production of oil and gas. 82% of US adults favor more large solar farms, 75% more wind farms, fewer than half support offshore oil drilling. 61%, a landslide majority, support requiring power plants like Dalman-Four to eliminate all carbon emissions by 2040. And even during Biden's big green push in 2023, 56% said the government wasn't doing enough. 74% support participation in international efforts to reduce the effects of climate change. Trump joined the only three other nations on earth who oppose it, Libya, Iran, and Yemen. The company he keeps, along with the science-impaired who constitute the noisy, noisome 1 in 10 who profess not to believe in climate change. Your constituents are represented in the data from this research institute. There is no evidence that these attitudes have changed in the last year, or that the state of Illinois doesn't take climate change seriously. So local advocates and groups who work to remedy and rectify environmental... So local advocates and groups who work to remedy and rectify environmental damage aren't going away. In fact, we're growing. And as the crises mount, more fires, more floods, more droughts, bigger storms, worse damages, more disasters, skyrocketing insurance, more and more of us will be here to press our community to think globally, to act locally, and ensure our elected officials take these existential threats seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person signed up to speak is Bree Roberts.
In the past 24 hours, Donald Trump has signed into law a series of executive orders aimed at stripping away rights and protections for immigrants, LGBTQ+, individuals, minorities, and women. And what are we doing in Springfield to counteract this? Are we just going to sit back as if nothing is happening? I know we're not. Let's start with immigration protection. As it stands, immigrants in Springfield, whether they are documented or not, are fearing for their lives. The federal government is making it harder for immigrants to feel safe, and that fear is preventing them from accessing basic services or reporting crimes. Springfield can act. Do you remember the welcoming city resolution that was rejected by the council back in 2017? We can't even pass an ordinance declaring Springfield a welcoming city to immigrants. And it was tabled by who? Two members of our sitting council right now, Red Path and Hanear. So let's remember, when we're working on making new ordinances, that we still have people that are consistently fighting back against protection of our most vulnerable citizens. Remember when Springfield City Council approved a $95,000 settlement to a resident who was denied gender-affirming healthcare, and they were a past-city employee back in 2020? What are we working on currently to ensure the rest of Springfield's LGBTQ residents are going to be protected as President Trump is actively taking away their rights right now, within the first 24 hours of his presidency? Next, let's talk about reproductive healthcare, a fundamental right that was under attack every single day. With Roe v. Wade overturned, women's access to safe and legal abortions are no longer guaranteed. They also just removed defending reproductive rights resources from the White House's webpage. And along with that, they also removed access to the Constitution on the webpage. I just want to put that out there. So if y'all think that this just isn't as serious as it is, you should go check out the White House webpage. Springfield can and should create policies that ensure women in our city have access to reproductive healthcare. And just to remind you, set aside your personal belief on if women should have access to abortions or not, because reproductive healthcare is not just abortions. We need to support local clinics like Planned Parenthood to ensure that our city stands firm in protecting women's rights to choose. This isn't about abortions, this is also about IVF. It's about cancer screening and monitoring. It's about pap smears. It's time to invest in those services to give women the freedom to make decisions about their own bodies. Now let's talk about qualified immunity. In case you have forgotten, as Trump was running for this presidency, he mentioned giving police officers qualified immunity. Under Trump, this policy would make it harder to hold officers accountable for excessive force, which is definitely not something Springfield can afford right now. Springfield can limit the use of qualified immunity in our city and ensure that when officers violate the rights of our residents, especially to our Black and Brown communities, they are held accountable. But what are you as city council going to do to make sure that actually happens? Because we've been here since June of last year, and I don't think I've seen anything happen since then. Finally, we have organizations in Springfield that are already doing the hard work of protecting vulnerable groups, because you guys don't. Immigrants, women, and minorities have legal defense groups, LGBTQ+ advocacy organizations, nonprofit organizations. It's time for this city to put funding where it matters, to ensure that our resources continue to work. These organizations are vital to the well-being of our city, and we should stand with them and not let them continue to struggle until they no longer exist. I understand the city doesn't have the same power as state or federal legislation, but Springfield can make a real impact directly to our city. We are not powerless. We can pass ordinances that protect our residents from federal overreach. We can fund and support organizations that are fighting for justice. We can make sure that our immigrant communities, minorities, LGBTQ+ and women are protected, and they don't have to face these threats in silence. This is no longer a time for personal opinions and political beliefs. We have to set aside what we think is right for the greater humanity. This is now a fight against humans, and it is your responsibility to protect us.
The next person signed up to speak is Robert Williams.
Good evening, everybody, mayor, city councilor. I am here today. Before I start, can I pass this out to each one of y'all? I want to show something.
Yeah, the clerk will come get it, and he'll pass it around.
Can we stop? Can I get my minutes back?
He's restarting your time, Mr. Williams. Go ahead, Joanna. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, that is my bill, my rent, at the hotel where I stay at, Madison View. They only pay $857.72, something like that. Since I've been there, I came, since I got approved of SSI, I came out my pocket with over $1,200. That $1,200 could have been on my crib, down payment for the first month, and the deposit. And now, I just discovered that the people that stand over there right now is on SSI, been on SSI as long as I've been out, and they ain't paying jack. I'm asking you all to reimburse me that money that y'all see I spent out my pocket, so I can get my life in order. You know, I have people, I have a family, I can't even invite them here. I can't even say this is my town. I can't claim this place, because you know why? I can't even invite my people to this place, because I have no place. And you know why? Because of y'all animosity, ignorance, racism, prejudice, all that. But hey, let's put that to the side. Let's look at the bigger picture. Y'all don't want to see a black man strive and survive. I'm trying to help these people. I know what's going on around here in this town. And if you ask about me, yeah, I tell you, I done stopped a lot of stuff, from people from getting killed, robbed, and even hotels. When I'm saying that, the owner come to me and asked me to squash stuff because of who I am. And that's being a man. That's it, that's all. I respect those that respect me, and I give respect, get respect. But like this situation here, mayor? I'm asking you all to come together and give me my money back, and put me in a place where I can call my own, so I can invite my family. See, I have a family. They all over, Mississippi, Chicago, Memphis, Nashville, Minnesota. I want to see them. I haven't seen them in two years. And you know why? Because I have no place to, hey, call my own. But now I want to talk about mental health. They full of bull. They not out here, coming out here, talking to us. We don't go to them. Only time I see mental health is when they in the car with the police, and something jump off, and they get out the car and say, oh, can I help you? That ain't how you get nowhere. If you go back last year, no, 2023, my homie Tyler, mental health, tried to talk to him. I had walked up to the mission, and I told, and I see that they couldn't talk to him. Somebody called him. I said, what's up, Tyler? He gave me some dap, bam, we kicking it. I asked him, what's wrong? I said, man, you can talk. He tell, I said, if you feeling suicidal, let these people know. Don't hold back. So he told them. They admitting them, but they couldn't get a zip out of, I'm talking about they standing there for at least 40 minutes, trying to talk to them. I know what's going on. You all say y'all don't know what's going on around here, because I heard, saw, that y'all said out your own mouth. Y'all don't know what these agencies doing, but we do, because we paying attention. And I know for a fact, they putting that money in their pocket, they not coming to see us, and they don't know what the hell we on with our mind. You know, I got medication I can't even get, because you see that beer right there? I'm broke. And not only that, my wallet got, I lost my wallet, got into a fight. Hey, I'm not susceptible from getting, you know, into, I'm not perfect. I do things, you know, where people get on my nerve and I get to fight. But like I said, I lost my wallet, my ID, my bank card, you know, but I'm asking you all to come forth, give me a job. I guarantee you, what you don't know, I'll let you know, far as them people, because they ain't doing jack. Helping hand, they got $3 million. They sold us a follow-up for a dollar. We all was living there in 2023, and we all caught bad bugs. I spoke on this before, and we didn't get nothing. They tore all our clothes away, my jewelry included, and they laid there, never reimbursed us. Then on top of that, they give us the same clothes. What kind of shit is that?
Thank you, sir, for your time. The chair will have entertained a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye. Close nay. Ayes have it.